Good evening, everyone. This is the City of Bella Beach Final Budget Public Hearing. This is going to be our military establishment and our final budget. This meeting is now called a meeting to order. And please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, its legal level, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, universal, and eternal.
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Frank Bankard.
Present.
Councilmember Kimberly Shaw Elliott.
Present.
Councilmember Todd Harper. Councilmember Jody Shirley.
Here.
Councilmember Anders Wellings.
Present.
Councilmember, or I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Lloyd Roberts.
Here.
Mayor Dave Gaddis.
Here.
City Manager Kyle Reefer.
Here.
City Attorney Nancy Meyer.
Here.
All right. Our first item on the agenda is consideration of Resolution 2025-08. Attorney Myers, would you please read the resolution?
Thank you. Resolution 2025-08, the resolution-
Let's turn your mic up there. Yoliya?
I think it's a gift.
All right.
I can hear myself. Yes. Resolution 2025-08, the resolution of the City Council of the City of Bella Beach, Florida, establishing the final at the war military for the system of 2025-2026 for the City of Bella Beach, Florida at 2.0394 mils and establishing effective date. Whereas the annual estimate of anticipated revenue and expenditures of the City of Bella Beach, Florida for the fiscal year commencing October 1st, 2025 and ending September 30th, 2026 has been submitted by the city manager in accordance with Article 8 of the city charter. And whereas the city council has reviewed the city manager's proposed budget and meaning it in tentatively adopting the amended budget. And whereas the city council of the City of Bella Beach, Florida is required by the city charter to adopt an annual cooperating and capital improvement budget for the each fiscal year. And whereas the budget must indicate the proposed tax levy for the City of Bella Beach, Florida. And whereas observed all due process and appropriate procedures required by the city charter in Chapter 200.065 of the fourth statute, including notice of public hearing, the city council now deems necessary and proper and to the best interest of the public to adopt by resolution the military. Now therefore, the City of Bella Beach, Florida hereby resolves one that the at the Warren tax knowledge for fiscal year 2025-2026 is hereby established at 2.0394 mils, that the military levity is higher than the rollback rate of 2.035 is certified that the county appraiser on July 1st, 2025 and has increased by 1.29 percent. And three, this resolution shall take effect immediately upon final adoption.
Thank you very much. Let's go to the citizens for comments. Would anyone like to speak? All right. Seeing as we have none, bring it back to the council. Council, I'm looking for a motion to approve the final mileage rate for the City of Bella Beach at 2.0394 mils. Do I have a motion? Motion is made by Frank Bankard. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jody Shirley. All right. Mr. Bankard, do you have the floor?
Well, I was going to vote this down until I received this letter on my desk and I were comparing it and I think this letter is going to go out. Okay, I know we talked about it before the meeting. So if that's given us equal protection, I'll vote for the question.
All right. Any other comments?
I just wanted to make a couple of comments in that I've had some residents that aren't happy with our votes to at the military rate we've had. And I think there's some misconception of what percentage of that tax bill really we're talking about. And so I just want to make great everyone's attention. I brought a random term notice that just shows the tax, the portion of the taxes that go to Bella Beach. And that portion of your tax bill is about 10 percent. It's a very small amount. And we're talking about on this property, the assessed value is roughly 1.3 million. The difference between the rollback rate and the rate that we're voting on today amounts to about $30. That's the only amount in taxes that we're talking about. So I just want residents to maybe take a look at your term notice and you look strictly at the line Bella Beach. Those are the only taxes we're talking about. We are not discussing county level taxes. Those taxes, if you have an issue with that tax rate, you need to bring it up with the county commissioners, not with Bella Beach. Bella Beach is not overtaxed. It's the county, it's the school board, it's the other taxation that is bringing your bill to. On this tax bill, it's $20,000 for a million a house, it's a million three. So just a kind of pretty perspective, City of Bella Beach, your tax rate is about 10 percent of your total bill goes to Bella Beach. The rest of it are taxes that we are not voting personally. Has nothing to do with this council. So you'll have to talk to those other county commissioners to discuss that and participate in those meetings because that's where you're getting the majority of your tax.
Thank you. Councilmember Shirley, I couldn't say it better myself. Do we have any other comments before we take a vote on the military? Seeing as we have none, Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Frank Bankard.
Yes.
Councilmember Kimberly Shaw Elliott.
Yes.
Councilmember Jody Shirley.
Aye.
Councilmember Anders Wellings.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lloyd Roberts.
Aye.
Mayor Dave Gaddis.
Aye. So the military, final military passes unanimously and by law, I am required to read this statement once again. The final military rate for the City of Bella Beach is 2.0394 mils for fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2025 and ending September 30th, 2026. This rate is higher than the rollback rate by 1.29 percent and is adopted upon the expenses of the city's general fund for the upcoming fiscal year. Thank you very much, everyone. And now we will move on to attend to item number two, which is consideration of Resolution 2025-09. Attorney Myers, you are up.
Thank you. Resolution 2025-09, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Bella Beach, Florida, making appropriations for certain expenditures, expenses, capital improvements, and certain indebtedness of the City of Bella Beach, Florida for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2025, ending September 30th, 2026, and establishing effective date. Whereas the City of Bella Beach will begin a new fiscal year on October 1st, 2025. And whereas it is necessary and required that prior to beginning of new fiscal year, a budget should be passed and adopted for the operation of city government. And whereas the city council has on two prior public hearings on the proposed budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2025 and ending September 30th, 2026. Whereas there is hereby established a tax at the rate of 2.0394 mils on property assessed as of January 1, 2025 for the purpose of raising revenues of general fund operations. Now therefore, be it ordained by the city council of the City of Bella Beach, Florida, section one of the documents entitled City of Bella Beach, Florida, Final Annual Budget Fiscal Year 2025-2026, dated September 15th, 2025, comprised the total amount of $7,201,725 for all funds reported. Section two, the budget is being presented as a balanced budget whereby there are sufficient revenues to offset all estimated expenditures and expenses. Section three, all budget appropriations are based upon the total expenditure and/or expenses, even though the budget has been prepared based on light items and summarized to a categorical level. Section four, appropriations may be transferred for the purpose of compensation needed by a budget transfer with the approval of the city manager as necessary. This action will not change the total dollar amount of the budget. Section five, the city council during fiscal year 2025-2026, made by residents, can make any amendments to the budget adopted by this resolution as it deems necessary and proper. Section six, all budget amendments requesting additional expenditures or expenses must also identify the corresponding funding source. Section seven, cash balance revenues shall be carried for prior year occurrences and reappropriated open purchase orders, which will be paid in fiscal year 2025-2026. Section eight, this resolution shall become effective on and after October 1st, 2025.
All right. I do have one possible correction. It's made by City Manager Reefer. Would you explain this?
Yes. After we first created this resolution, we did increase the stormwater budget for repairs, which is line item 5380460, by $45,000 and is reflected in a revision to this resolution. So I just noticed that their long copy got placed in the agenda when she read it. So it's supposed to read on section one, the last line is supposed to read, read $7,201,700, oh, sorry, $7,246,725. And again, that additional $45,000 is for stormwater repair on item.
Okay. Before we move to citizen comments, is there anyone here that did not understand that number? Everybody good? Yes, sir. Okay. All right. That being said, let's go to citizens for comments. All right. Well, citizen comments are now closed. Counsel, I'm going to need a motion to approve Resolution 2025-09 to approve the final budget for 2025-2026.
Someone?
Okay. Jody Shirley made her motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Lloyd Roberts. And Jody, you have the floor.
Well, as I said before, we've put a lot of time into this. We've got a balanced budget and it can be difficult with the perfect.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Frank Bankard.
Yes.
Councilmember Kimberly Shaw Elliott.
Yes.
Councilmember Jody Shirley.
Aye.
Councilmember Anders Wellings.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lloyd Roberts.
Aye.
Mayor Dave Gaddis.
Aye. So the budget, Resolution 2025-09 passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone, for your hard work on this. I will add a little comment on that now that we're finished with this vote is, look, no one is out there. Not one person came and no one's tuned in to see what we're going to do with our military rate and our budget. Either they really trust us or they were all tuned in at our work sessions. I'm not sure which one it is, but very interesting. All right. We are now on to item number three. We have a presentation from the Ellis County Sheriff's Office for the Beginning of the Month's Law Enforcement Report. Aye. Come on up to the podium.
Presenting me again. The Ellis County Sheriff's Office. I work the Alpha Day shift and I'll be filling in today for the Charlie shift sergeant. The August stats, when it comes to the major property and personal crimes, we had one burglary, which was really just a squatter. There was nothing stolen. We had one theft, which was a lawnmower that was parked near the curb next to the garbage cans. So there was just a little bit of confusion with that. When it comes to arrests, we had a DUI and there was a controlled substance arrest out of that. All of the arrests were due to traffic-related contact. And that was a total of seven, seven people with 10 charges. So for the month of August, we had 729 events in the City of Bella Beach, resulting in 813 units responding. Traffic stops, house checks, I'm sorry, there's a mosquito over here. Traffic stops, house checks, number one hangups, a couple domestics, one DUI, which was the one that resulted in an arrest. There were no crashes, no vehicle crashes. There was 214 citations and warnings issued when it comes to traffic enforcement and voting, mainly, mainly right here in front of the 444 Causeway Boulevard and 4th Street Gulf Boulevard and 14th Street Gulf Boulevard. Those were the hot areas when it came to traffic.
Sergeant, were those median patrols wherever you're sitting, waiting for someone to come by?
Not necessarily. They do a lot of median work when it comes to the crosswalks because that way they can have a good visual of the time because just because the flashing lights go on doesn't mean that. They can stop immediately. So we have set up several initiatives, I know it on my shift, for directed control areas, hotspots. And I think it was Saturday, we did one on the other side of the bridge for speed and move over law because I know we have a lot of construction workers and vehicles and people need to be educated on that move over law for our own safety.
All right. Thank you. All right. Do we have any questions or comments for the sergeant? Yes, sir.
What's the rule on our beaches here for nudity?
For nudity?
Is it restricted or?
Yeah, it's against law.
Okay. Because we have a nudist that likes to, I don't know how you put it, likes to sit on the beach, go in the water. He was just in there today when I was running like mild or whatever. But he does sometimes cover up when a girl goes by, but I'm not really looking forward to seeing him too much.
Is he down by the waterline or is he up near?
He actually keeps his stuff on the seawall and turns around Benzo a lot. I don't know if he's giving it $10 shorts or not, it's an outline. He's been out there an awful lot and he was like at 8:50, 8:50 Gulf Boulevard.
Okay. That's the first I've heard on my shift. Obviously, I'm one of four shifts, so I would encourage it to be reported.
I think he's one of our residents, unfortunately.
Is it day morning? Is that what you're saying?
No, it's around anywhere from 2:00 to 5:00.
Well, when I lived on Bella Shores and there was a nudist swimming pool, I told my husband, I'll tell you the same thing, I told my husband, call the police. Because they can't do anything about it unless they seal.
He doesn't sit in the gate access, but he'll move up maybe a block or two. And I don't have my phone when I'm in the water.
Depending on the location and the specifics, you know, there is a statute for indecent exposure, so we could address that.
Never a cop around when you need it.
There's never a cop around when you don't call them. Because when you call us, we're there fast.
I always call them usually when I'm leaving, but 99% of the time, they're always in.
And what was the cross that you saw him at? The address?
1801.
1801, okay. 1800, is that right?
Eight, eight.
800.
Eight hundred and thirty.
I'll let Deputy Naio know.
Thank you.
I'll be very excited to-
Any other questions or comments now that this meeting is really turning into the worst?
That's what I'm here for. Sergeant, thank you so much for being here and I appreciate the support.
Anytime. Thank you, guys.
All right. Now we are to unfinished business. I'm sorry, general business. City Manager Reefer.
I have one, the bids came back for the 9th Street pump station. We have a big tabulation and just wanted to share for information. The lowest bid came in from Cunningham and Rude Woods Incorporated at $399,928. Oh, sorry, $399,920. And then the next up, second lowest bidder was at Cast Cart Construction and they were So General Engineering is reviewing all of the bid submissions for accuracy and their experience and then they're going to provide a further report on these lowest bidders. I don't know if present that at the council meeting, but I just wanted to share this information with you today.
It's a huge spread and it's unbelievable. Yeah, we just need to be very careful on that one, I believe. All right. Anything else?
That is all. That's all I have.
Okay. All right. So I did have an agenda item. I've been receiving multiple complaints from residents about gates being locked. The gates were locked, then they were locked, then they're locked again and... Councilmember Bankard, you probably know what the latest is. Are they locked again tonight?
Well, it's funny because I don't know if they were ever not locked, but I've been taking pictures and that. And just last Friday, I talked to one of our deputies and he said, and I talked to, I'm not going to mention your names, I talked to the other deputy and he said he discussed it with Kyle and he says, this is really, I'd say word rotten, but he says, you know, I see people that want to get on the beach at 5:30 in the morning, they can't get on. I tried those and if I'm moving the ship, he says, but now, he says, they want us locking these gates right after sunset, which is going to get shorter and shorter. And then I saw another deputy last, like I said, like Friday before, and he said, we talked together and we're not going to lock them anymore, but then they got relocked. And this was at 10:00 at night. So right now, they're being locked.
That means a resident has combination, is what that means.
Oh, I have a combination, maybe I need-
Okay. So anyway, the point is, is that they are in violation of our deeded access and our interlocal agreement. You know, everyone knows my history with this community and how I always try to handle things peacefully and try to avoid litigation at all costs. So originally, we asked Tom to draft the letter and then we kind of dialed it back because we felt they stopped. And now it seems like they've started up again. And so I just decided I'd take a crack at it and then pass it off to City Manager Reefer and then he passed it off to Tom and Tom made a couple of changes because I kept calling, I kept referring to the interlocal as the interlocal, but he wanted to say interlocal agreement. But basically, what I would like to do is summarize what I'm attempting to do with this letter. Number one, I'm trying to make Bella Shore realize that this is not like the umbrellas. This is actually them preventing us from entering the art deeded access lots, which is completely different. It's, in the umbrella situation, it was bad enough because everyone was worried about skin cancer and their babies getting hurt, but they were at least able to get on the beach and they had the option to do that. This situation is a lot different because if you're already on the beach and they lock it right after sunset, you have to walk all the way down to Henny Rocks Beach or you have to walk all the way up to, I guess, the hotel there. That's the first, the first access, which is a pretty long way if you live on, let's say, 8th or 7th. So I was just trying to figure out what would be a good compromise rather than just coming in with gunslinging and making demands. I thought that maybe we could take some ownership on this also because I understand their reasoning for wanting to lock cars out. I also understand that legally, we are entitled to enter that beach anytime we want to, even if it's 3:00 in the morning. If I live next to one of those accesses, I don't want car lights showing up in my bedroom window at 3:00 in the morning while somebody decides to smoke a doofie or whatever it is they're going to do. So I agree with them that really the lot should be locked, however, there needs to be some way that we can still exit and enter the beach on foot. One of their arguments is going to be that we, is that our short-term renters are coming onto the beach and then they're looting and they're breaking in and they're trespassing. But that's not a valid argument. As we all know, we don't have short-term rentals. That's not our policy. The minimum you can be here is 90 days and by that time, you've made neighbors and you're not here for the weekend to party and go see what you can take from the rich people across the street. So that's not really a good valid argument. So what I'm asking is, I would like to send this letter tomorrow, but I'm also offering a little bit of responsibility on our side and a little bit of cost because they've never had any sort of pedestrian access. The gate has always been unlocked. If somebody really wanted to get in there, we know that the police are not going to ride by for several hours in the middle of the night. And even if they do, are they actually going to look in the darkest corner of those lots? So I think really the real solution is that maybe we agree to work with them and actually put our own pedestrian gate in. We actually pay for it. We maintain it. If there's an emergency situation, we lock it. And it's ours. And then as far as what they decide with automobile traffic, well, then that's on them. If they want to close it after sunset, you know, an hour or something later, then I think that they should have every right to do that. So that's kind of where I'm going with this, this letter without reading verbatim. But I did make a point in reminding them that not only does the deeded access prove that we, that that is for us and it's for, you know, beach and bathing purposes, but also it's, we're reminded of it whenever the interlocal was written. It actually makes reference to that and acknowledges that we have that deeded access. So what was the fix? So gave them three options and we know that the only one that they could do immediately would be leave the gates unlocked after posted hours. Any other solution that I've offered is also going to require that they pay money and they're not going to do that. I've looked at the gates, I've looked at the pathways on both sides of the gates and I think it's perfectly reasonable that we be allowed to make, to add a permanent gate on each one of those accesses and then we just maintain it. We make sure it's kept up, painted, blue, and it's going to latch that locks automatically whenever someone goes through it. That way it's not banging at night and for safety purposes, we have a way of locking it down. I would like to ask this council to give me the authority to send this email after this meeting and then address their permission tomorrow evening at their meeting and pitch this idea to them as, you know, something that should be agreeable to both parties. Because at the end of the day, the problem is not us. The problem that they have is probably not going away and they need to spend their own money on their own private lots to harden their security. They need to ramp up their, their police patrolling and they need to make sure that if a resident is under construction, that it's gated off and that no one can get into it. So other than that, that's not on us and we have nothing to do with the people that are actually supposedly trespassing and violating their, they're trespassing on their property. Also, what I'd like to do is enclose a copy of the interlocal agreement from 2003 and I would also like to send excerpts from our municipal code about beach parking details and then our rental minimum, just to show them that, hey, we didn't just make this up. I can prove to you that we're not the short-term rental people and our neighbors in our community is not going to do that. So thoughts? I'll start with Mr. Bankard since he's been the most vocal.
I think it's a great idea. I appreciate you taking this and going with it. You're ready? Now, it's funny that they're locking us out, but they're not telling their residents they can't get on the beach. And beaches are closed because if you want to get on at 28th Street, you can walk down 28th Street or you can walk in on that 21st Street. So it's really just limiting the people, at least the- So, it's really just limiting the people east of Gulf Boulevard down our beach. And I really believe Commissioner Story who's pushing a lot of this stuff, I mean, he doesn't even live here anymore. I think there's criminal things that he's facing right now, but he seems to be the fly you would every time something dumb like this comes.
Well, I will say that whenever you want something out of someone, don't point fingers. And so, all I'm asking is, is your thoughts on what's forward with this? Vice Mayor Roberts?
I think it's a great idea. Ideally, if they just outright accept one of your options, that would be awesome. And even if they don't, at least it's gonna establish a dialogue.
All right, all right, thank you. Councilmember Shirley?
Yeah, I'm in complete support of this. I think it's reasonable. I agree we should make the investment gate, at least to take it on some validation and showing that we're willing to look at it and try to keep people off the beach that shouldn't be at night.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Elliott?
Certainly appreciate you asking for this and addressing this issue. Couple questions. One is, if we have a pedestrian-grade gate, how does a resident enter it?
It's, what I'm asking for is just a latch. It's not gonna be a lock.
Ah.
It's like the auto closes gates on your backyard.
Oh, so they close the?
It just will automatically close after somebody goes through, you know, like spring-loaded or a shock absorber or something. That's where the cost will, that'll be the most cost for Bellar Beach after it's built. It's like replace it every so often, but.
You lock the auto gate, but the pedestrian gate is just not getting?
Yeah, it's gonna be all mechanical. You push the little lever and you go in, you push the little lever and you go out and it should be pretty straightforward. Any other questions?
Have you thought about just going and seeing and asking or talking in person as opposed to the letter first?
Well, I have actually, I've gotten some feedback and I think that this is the best way to go. I really do because if I, if I see them in person, now it's actually public record that we tried, okay? Whereas a one-on-one, I need to be in front of all of them.
I mean, nobody's meeting.
I just wanna do it tomorrow night, provided that the council agrees that it's okay for me to do that.
I guess my question is, have you thought about just presenting it in the meeting and not send the letter in advance?
I'd like for them to have. I made that. My intentions were to email tonight and then hand-deliver tomorrow because most of them don't read their email.
Right.
But I'd like for them to be able to read it all and then we ask it out tomorrow if at all possible.
I mean, the letter is nicely written. It's not, I mean, I think it's great. I think it's not threatening or not saying, you know, here's the, here's laid out facts.
Yes.
And here's our solution.
Absolutely.
Right? And so, I think that's a great way to approach it. Yeah, and I believe, didn't you guys think you attended one of the meetings?
I'll be there tomorrow.
I mean, didn't you attend one of the meetings, try to discuss this already and you got shut down?
We were, I was told by Mr. Bloom, who I've been getting along with, "We own the lots." He said, "You don't own the lots, they're a tax parcel to you, but the legal description is Bellar Beach and they're art deeded access." I have a letter to the Attorney General about this and now it's been four weeks since I wrote and sent it, and so can he jump in on it? Because I really believe we need something in writing going forward.
Okay, I'm gonna go to Councilmember Wellings.
Yeah, yeah, thanks, Mayor Gaddis. Yeah, I, I have been thinking exactly the same way as you. I do like the idea. What I had thought about bringing up in the meeting was maybe, and I like your idea better actually, was to just basically don't look, would we put the chain on to, so close the gates? If they were basically allowed to remain open only enough for a pass for pedestrians to go through and it would block the cars? So, I just thought like, hey, maybe you don't have to just, because I think they're putting like a bicycle lock and they're doing like many, many loops. I mean, if you didn't do many, many tight loops around it, in theory, the gate can still be open enough for a person to go through. We're never closed. But I like your idea a little better and it shows that we got some skin in the game because we're going to some lucky to it. So, yeah, I like it.
Thank you. And to comment on your comment is, my thoughts were, they would appreciate this idea more than a gate slopping back and forth and making noise.
Right, right.
Because, you know, we're about to hit the North Wind and all that.
Yep, yep, yep.
Okay, so, one more thing, one more ask of the council. I would like to send a copy of this letter also to Sheriff Alteri with an introduction letter letting him know why we're sending this and how not only are they in violation, but he is, the sheriff's department is also violating our rights. And I think it's, I think it's in his best interest to know that because, God forbid, if this gets worse before it gets better, I don't want to have to drag them into it also. So, but he's been contacted and he's given, he's turned it over to Legal and Legal says this is, this is, sounds like a town dispute that should be worked out between two towns. But I agree with you, Mr. Mayor, that who's ordering the deputies to actually physically lock the gates? I don't believe this is their contract to do that. God, I remember when Robert Stoll was here, I used to come off the beach late and I went to close the gates a couple of times and he says, "Oh, I'll get them." And I went to UConn because the holders were so gummed up, he sent an air down. I mean, I almost had a hernia just trying to close them and they don't maintain it, is what I'm saying, Bellar Shores. We actually debate this one too, but I don't know where you're running. Hey, look, God bless you, send it to the sheriff. My point is with the sheriff is, at the end of the day, who are you taking orders from? You know, because you're supposed to be non-biased and if you are not siding with one town or the other, then you shouldn't be locking it at all.
Yes.
So, that's gonna be my stance. I have a decent relationship with Bob and maybe we'll get somewhere with it. I appreciate the council's confidence and we'll see what happens.
Mayor, I had something. I wanted, thank you for asking us rather than just going out and acting as though you're representing the city without approval. Because I think we have to be cautious of that as council members. Without approval, we should not be going and contacting other municipalities as though we have authority of any sort because we don't and we don't have everyone's authority. So, I wouldn't suggest contacting the state attorney or anything like that without, unless you're doing it, you know, not as a council member, but as a resident who is seeking a resolution, but.
Well, first of all, hold on. I appreciate your, I appreciate what you said and I know where you're going with this and yes, I would like to give Councilmember Bankard the opportunity to respond just because we know that you're talking about him, but that's okay.
Well, it wasn't really intended. I'm just saying as a general, it's because we kind of commit that, right? I mean, we're all trying to be helpful and I just, if you're representing the council, just make sure you get, thank you, that's all I'm saying. Thank you.
You're very welcome. All right, Councilmember Bankard, what?
First of all, those lots are deeded to the people east of Gulf Boulevard. They're not deeded to the city of Bellar Beach. So, I'm one of the persons that is deeded to them. And if you want to really get technical of your reading deeds, anyone 20th Street South or North, I mean, really isn't entitled to those deeds. It's deeded to the people east of Gulf Boulevard that face those lots. So, the city can do anything they want and God bless you, Mr. Mayor, for trying to get this thing resolved, but I don't wanna see it go to court either, it doesn't have to. And I know Kyle, you've been trying to get this thing resolved too, but hopefully you're not dealing with some hard hits. But again, this is, this is a property deed gifted to me by the Kirkabees and everybody else of this east of Gulf Boulevard. It was not gifted to the city of Bellar Beach.
All right, and with that being said, I'm gonna ask a favor of you since you're gonna be there tomorrow. Would you please give me the opportunity to speak and no matter what the answer is, let's leave with whatever they say, whatever their response is, let's give them time to speak. I'm gonna ask you not to enrage them.
I will grant you that. I probably won't even, I wasn't probably even really going to speak tomorrow night because there are things in the works. Hopefully this thing, stuff, the things that are in the works.
Okay.
Okay, so, like I said, God bless you, you get this thing resolved.
Okay, all right. Do we have any other, let's see, there was a tax statement. Is this what?
That was for Member Shirley's presentation. She just wanted to explain the village. It went hand-in-hand with the others.
Oh, okay, all right. I thought, well, is this a?
I liked it. We were trying to provide examples.
Got you, okay. All right, so now, let's see, I'll get back on to, I think that's the last thing we have in this meeting. So, let's take a five-minute break. I'm gonna call for a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All right, the special meeting ends and we are adjourned. I guess I should say, "All in favor?"
Aye.
All right, we're adjourned. Five minutes.